All this meeting in the Upsher County Board of Education. First order of business, stand aside at front.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What is your name on the motion statement?
Sure. The mission of the Upsher County Schools is to provide academic preparation, social responsibility, employability, and a desire of lifelong learning.
Please let the clerk note that all members are present with the exception of Dr. Omen and Mr. Suter. Item four on the agenda is the approval of the agenda and/or agenda adjustments.
Do you have some personnel additions? And that's included in your packet?
Your attachment A.
Yes.
Do I have a motion to accept that as presented?
Motion to approve as presented.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Right. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the amendments from the statutory meeting, item five. That would be your attachment A. Do I have a motion to accept those as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Item six, acknowledgements and/or announcements, up your highlights.
As you can see, Energy Express is getting ready for their last week. It's a wonderful program, as I know because I've been in charge of it three or four years myself. There's a different week theme, and you can see myself, we come home place, they're all around the community, I'm not going to read them off to you. And the kids have done a really, had a really good time, and we've had some really good volunteers. Kristin Irvin is overseeing it, and she did give me some statistics to share with you if I could. There were 32 kids enrolled in the program from three schools. Forty is the max. So we hit 46 sign up, but that always happens, that we end up losing some. And they said that's been the biggest struggle, is getting enough kids. So next year, they're not going to just order, offer it to the three schools, but they're going to offer it to any, all the schools.
Great.
And that way we'll make, it's better to have too many than not enough. Fifteen children in this year's program are in special ed, and 13 children are receiving Title I services. So that's a good thing for those students to have that extra help. They have had high attendance, so that means the kids have been enjoying it. Twenty-seven kids have met the attendance minimum. The strategies are family engagement, including positive notes home, calling when a child is absent, and encouraging parents to volunteer. They've had 33 volunteers that have served 487 hours through yesterday. So, and I also have some, I'll pass these down for you to read. A couple of our volunteers wrote letter, you know, just saying how their experience has been. I'll pass that down to you. Then we have a fifth grader who's been involved in the program, that wrote, wrote a story about why she likes Energy Express, and then a first grader, who's in the program. I've been over and visited a couple times, and we've had a great group of mentors this year. They've, they seem like they've really enjoyed it. Sometimes it's not what they expect, and then they're like, well, what did I sign up for? But we've had a great experience with them, and as I said, I think it's a very worthwhile program, and we hope to continue it. Okay? Any questions about that? And take a look at the end or whatever, at the different things that they've made. Lot of art involved, and they love that. Also, yesterday evening, the Boy Scouts arrived at the high school. Actually, I went up today and met them. They were working on the projects today. They are from the Hudson Valley in New York. And was talking to some of the leaders this afternoon. I said, I'm sorry, our accommodations couldn't be any better. And they said, you have air conditioning.
[laughing].
They said, our schools in New York, most of them don't have any air conditioning. So, and I said, well, I thought you all were bringing cots, because we were told they were going to sleep on cots. And he said, well, one of the, there's three groups from the Hudson Valley that are in Elkins, Clarksburg, and Buchanan. And one group got the cots, but no air conditioning. And they got air conditioning, but no cots. So they said, we would prefer to have the air conditioning. And so today, they were out at Hampton, at the boat ramp there. And I did go out this afternoon to see, I thought I could catch them there, but they'd already left. And they did a beautiful job on the ramp, planted flowers.
It is such a nice area up there anyway. I had no idea that was.
Yeah. And so I caught up with them. They were over at the county park, cleaning up around the county park, and also working on those bike trails that have been built back in there. J.J. Ford was assisting in that, and Buck Edwards. And they, the first comment they made to me is they said, we're going to have to move our dinner back this evening. I don't, they were, Jaws BBQ is meeting them out at the game farm, Wildlife Center. And they're going to have an evening there, and then coming back from 8:30 to 10:30 to swim in the pool. So they're all looking forward to that after today. And they said, the reason they had to move back their dinner was because the Arlington Community Center made, volunteered to make their food for lunch. And they said, there was so much food, that they were so stuffed, that they were not hungry at all. When I saw them at almost 4 o'clock in the afternoon.
That's nice. Well, I know in West Virginia.
So, yeah. And I said, welcome to West Virginia. And we talked a little bit, and I think they're having a really good experience in Upsher County.
I saw them, I was at a party last night at the, when I saw them arrive, you know, wasn't?
Yeah. They got in kind of late.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah. So I think they went to bed.
Right, close to 10.
Yeah, it was pretty nice.
I'm thinking it was pretty late.
Yeah. But I think it's great that that's what the Boy Scouts stand for, and, well, it's not just the Boy Scouts. I shouldn't just call it Boy Scouts, because it is Scouts now. And they have the adventures, which, which are the older kids, and that's male and female together. So I think they're looking forward to getting down to, I can't think of the, I can never remember the name, Bechtel, something Preserve, or whatever it's called, Reservation, or whatever it is, to join the rest of the Scouts. So they'll be working in the morning tomorrow, and then leaving tomorrow evening to head down there. But I just thought I'd let you know, and they really appreciated the fact that we allowed them to use the high school to sleep and get showers. So, very much appreciate it.
Thank you. Any unfinished business? Item seven?
They, the maintenance, they're getting a lot done. I know we had the water done at the middle school. So that's all completed, and what they're doing now is just trying to catch up and get the more important things out of the way before school starts. I think we're in really good shape. I don't have anything critical.
We're going some good bits to do, tile in the middle school.
Yes.
Classrooms that have a problem with the tile coming up.
The old section has a lot of classrooms with missing tiles, and of course, those are probably not your safest old tiles there. So instead of tearing them all up, they're just covering them with the new type tiles, but you don't have to wax or anything like that. So, trying to get as many done as we possibly can this summer.
All right. Thank you. Questions? All right. Item eight, financials. Mr. Carver, you have anything you'd like to add?
Just going through the year-end process, trying to, we have to keep things open for 60 days for late invoices and late revenue to come in. Was at a office of school finance conference today, and they were talking about Medicaid billing, and they've been pushing DHHR to make sure that for the 2016 cost report that we filed in December, and then went through the audit, that they pay us those funds and time for them to get us, get them to the FY '17 fiscal year. So that would be a great help to us if that does occur.
Good.
So hopefully they'll follow through on that.
All right. Any questions about any of the budgetary items? If not, I'll take a motion to...
Motion to approve as presented.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, the consent agenda, out of county attendance request, that would be your attachment C.
I had a lot of out-of-county.
Yeah, I was going to ask if this is typical?
It's a little bit more than usual, I'd say. I think part of it is with the Volga Century School closing, and those people weren't happy with losing their school, that some of them are wanting to come to Upsher County rather than, but of course, it depends on our numbers. And I'll talk a little bit more about our numbers when we get the information and stuff like that. But I, I think it's a little bit more than usual we've been getting. And actually, we've had a few more requests even after this, so.
And we had one today to leave the, two kids to leave the county.
Yeah. It kind of evens out in some respects.
It seems like a lot, because they're all in one.
Well, right. I was just wondering if this is...
We usually get like little...
We usually get one or two here, and then we don't go, and then we get another one. They don't usually come all at once.
I'm joking, but we're trying to convince Mr. Major that we need to lease the old Volga Century School for the early years. We can't swallow stuff after. I'm joking.
Thank you.
[laughing].
Oh, Mr. Carver.
Motion to approve as presented.
So we're, sorry, we're, just to clarify, we're making this approval so long as space?
There is space available, yes. We send them, we always send them that caveat, that if there's no available space, then we obviously take in-county kids.
Of course.
Before we'll take any out-of-county.
And the letter that we send parents that tells us that approved, clarify that to the out-of-county.
Sorry, I just want to make sure we put this over.
Okay. So we have a motion. Robbie, do I have a second?
Second, putting in the space availability.
Thank you. All those in favor of accepting this as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item 10, approval of the 2017-2018 budget request for the Western University Extension Office. Mr. Carver, you have anything to say about that?
This is a formality. We, when we did our budget, we put the funds in there. Normally, we do this before we do our own budget, because of the uncertainty over the state's budget, we never, not approved to do that.
Officially?
We never officially approved it, so this would just make it an official approval.
You're comfortable with us doing this?
Yes. We put the money into the budget when we did the budget that you approved.
Great, I thought we can, I thought we can do this.
Yeah, me too. Yep. All right. So do I have a motion to accept this as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item 11, the approval of intervention resource officer agreement for Buchanan Academy Elementary School for the 2017-18 school year, your attachment E.
This is just to continue what we've been doing with the city, which I think, if you remember when Mark Stewart was here, that he thinks it's, he thinks it's wonderful, and it's best job he's ever had, he said. So we're, I think it's been really wonderful for Buchanan Academy. It's really helped with a lot of different issues.
When the pro officers, you know, came to our board meeting, I thought it was wonderful to hear from them.
Yeah.
And I really like, I really like this program.
And it's just a continuation of the same document?
Right.
Just new basis.
Updates, yeah.
Motion to approve as presented?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor of accepting this as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staining? Thank you. Item 12, approval of textbook adoptions for 2017-2018, that would be your attachment F.
That is world languages this year, and then next year will be math, which will be a big one.
I wish Mr. Jerico was here.
He, they went, they're all, this is the time of year when there's conferences and meetings. George has actually had a conference all week, so he came back, but it's only...
So these are...
This is the adopt, the, there was, there's a list that they get, and then the teachers look at them. In this case, since we only have a couple of teachers teaching Spanish and French, they pretty much got to choose what they wanted.
But the state gives a list and says you can choose from one of these three titles.
There's an approved list from the state, and those are the ones you're allowed to pick from. You can't go out and go...
And a lot of the state, and the state actually bids those adoptions out.
To get the best prices.
So they aggregate all that, so we can get the best price they want.
We knew that it was somewhat controlled.
Oh, yeah.
So, okay.
But the teachers did.
Yes.
Have altered our...
Yes, oh, yes. Yeah, actually, we just left it up to them, because, like I said, there's only a couple of teachers. So they got to pick what they wanted.
And Mr. Jerico, he liked, he liked the books?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Do I have a motion to accept this textbook adoption?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item 13, annual review of policy 1005 school board effectiveness.
This is just updating the required policy that we have. I don't think there's a whole lot different from what we have.
What we've just, I guess.
Pardon? Oh, I'm sorry.
Do you see any strike throughs?
No.
I don't see it yet.
It's just one of those we have to...
Yes. It's required.
So are there any changes?
Unless you all want changes. You have to review it every year, and if you have changes, you need to tell us, and then they will put it through the revision process.
Yeah. This is your opportunity to add to that. So we're not going to prove it tonight, we're just going to...
Yeah, if they don't want changes, it doesn't need anything more done. They just are required to review it every year.
We have talked, and maybe this isn't the place, but it's come up at more than one meeting about letting people call in and doing this and doing that. And when that was brought up, I'm not a fan, per se, but I've been talking to other board presidents, and they do permit people to call in for the general session. So if we wouldn't be here and we had somebody, as long as we didn't need an executive session, they could call in for the general session, which I would be more comfortable with than, say, allowing somebody be on the phone in an executive session. I'm not saying we should do this, I just think if it's part of this, we should maybe talk about it, if that's something we want to do. And I think that if it is something we want to do, we should limit, like, you can call in twice. It can't be every meeting that you call in, because we need faces here.
Well, and I also think that maybe, I don't know what others would be comfortable with, but, but if we need it for a quorum, like, if you didn't get yourself here, but you can do it for a quorum, then the compensation per meeting, I think, needs to either be adjusted or eliminated for, I don't know, I think it's something to consider.
A call in, yeah.
You know, for a call in.
I don't know. And if this isn't the right place to have this conversation?
There's another policy that we can...
Okay. But I do want it to be something that we should, we should look at.
Maybe we could put it on...
I'm trying to bring this up a year ago.
Agenda?
Max needing, needing per discussion.
The only thing I would caution about, and I think this came up the last time we had this discussion, is if it's a meeting that involves an executive session, that...
The person on the other...
Would not be able to participate now, because of the fact that, you know, if you call in, I don't know who's sitting in the room here.
That's correct.
And it's not, it's supposed to be confidential.
And I would, if we were going to go this direction, I would certainly want that to be a caveat.
Yeah.
Right.
I think that's an important piece of, you know, you can be in the meeting, you can do votes that are open session, but I don't think, I personally think that we should draw one there, and that's what other counties have told me too.
That's where it's going to be difficult.
Right. Right. You're right, that is going to be an issue, but I just, I just...
Because if a person is calling in for, if a member is calling in in order to make the quorum, and then an executive session is called, then...
And you don't have the quorum.
We don't have the quorum.
Yeah. Well, the only option, I think, in that case is to, I mean, could we table whatever the decision would be for the executive session until we did have an in-person forum?
But it could be that if it was a student expulsion, for instance...
Like, has to happen by a certain day.
Then it has to happen, plus, plus it goes in the executive session, so, I don't know, we could all say...
A lot of logistics in this.
It is, there are.
That's right, it's a good discussion.
Right. And that, and that's why, like I said, I had spoken with a couple of the presidents at a recent meeting, and, to find out what they did. And so I just thought...
Does Mon County?
Mon County does do it, yes. But they don't allow them in executive sessions.
Interesting.
Yes. Yep. So if we could put that on, and then whatever policy that needs to fall into.
Right.
Does anybody have any suggestions, or, I think that we run pretty smoothly.
I think we run, this, we have an effective board. I think this is a good, yeah. I like it.
So Adrian, you say we don't have to do anything as long as we...
You just need to indicate to Mr. Major any changes that you want, and then they'll have to incorporate them into the policy, and put it back through for revision, and it'll have to have three readings, and...
I don't think we need changes. Anybody?
I agree.
Then we've done all we need to do. We just, the minutes will reflect that you reviewed it.
I don't think so, not that, not that I wouldn't change at the state level.
Right. And we can do that.
Look at this girl, sneak that in there. Let's get it.
All right. Thank you. Item 14 is the discussion of the personal leave incentive program. Mr. Carver? Busy tonight, Mr. Carver.
Just to you, the leave incentive program, for employee cannot miss more than five days of using sick leave, or personal leave. And if a full-time employee misses zero, they get $400, and then it reduces down to possibly $200, up to five days. The half-time employee, and we didn't have any this year, we don't have very many, half-time, they would get half of the $400. So we had 179 employees this year that qualified for some level of incentive, at a cost of $49,700 and some dollars. Of the remaining employees, 138 had between six and 10 absences. So they would have had to improve that score a little bit to, we had 148 that were between 11 and 20, and we had 48 that had more than 20. Of course, we're...
Was that all employees? I'm sorry if you said that. Or was that just professional or just personal?
That's all employees.
It's all together? Okay, all right, sorry.
334 employees did not qualify for the bonus. 179 didn't. We had one person that subbed in two positions for 180 days. In other words, they didn't miss.
Right.
And they, they worked every day for the school term, so they, there's a provision in code that substitute teacher, or substitute employees after 20 days for service and 30 days for professional zero title to all rights and benefits as a full-time employee. So we include one substitute in that number. Actually, we just happened to have. Just to compare, last year, for FY '16, we paid out 1.2 million dollars for substitute costs. In the current year, that was down to $956,000, reduction of $239,000. It, I would be hard pressed to say what impact...
Right.
This program had on those numbers, because there's lots of different things that affect that.
But it's still down, so look at that line.
Yeah, I think the other part of that was the, the provisions we made to the attendance policy that put a little more teeth in that, where people, we know people are, you know, taking off Fridays and Mondays, we can call them and have a conversation about that, and I think that had...
Yeah. I'm impressed talking about that.
As well. So, so your choices, and there's maybe more choices than this, but one would be to discontinue the policy, one would be to continue it in its present format, or you could alter it in some way. And I put some information together for you, and I haven't priced this out in any way, but a schedule where, based on years of experience, and how many days you've been decredited over those, a 200-day employee, every employee gets a day and a half for 20 days of employment. So a 200-day employee gets 15 sick leave days a year. So after 10 years of service, they would have presumably of 150 sick days if they possible. So using five days as the benchmark, if you assume that they miss five days or less every year, if they were allotted 150 days, if they still had 100 days, we would build that into the policy that they could get a bonus that year, and it would be an either-or thing. If you miss, if you have perfect attendance, don't miss any days, you get the bonus, or if you stay within the schedule. So you have two opportunities, because everybody, you know, you get the flu, or you miss because you, the party leaves, something like that, but you still will have an opportunity to do it either way.
Well, and that's something that will, I mean, it doesn't, it's not a lot right now for those younger teachers, but that is something that would be a little bit more of a draw for them, because they don't, we've had that conversation before.
Yeah. And in the past, there was incentives for employees to accumulate days, because you could use them at retirement to either buy health insurance to get you to Medicaid, or to add your service to your retirement benefit. And those are gone with the revisions to the pension plan. So there's really no incentive for newer employees to hold on to their days. So this would give them some, and whether this is the right mix of, maybe it needs to be more lenient, maybe instead of this being, this an average of five, maybe it should be an average of seven. I just throw that out there for discussion, because I do think we need to do something for our younger employees to give them incentive to hold on to their...
I agree.
I don't know, I would, I would, personally, I would be more toward entertaining seven, because newer teachers are less likely to come in with immune systems who are ready for elementary school first year, you know, all those, all those germs. And if you got the flu, you're down and out for a week, you get, like, I don't want teachers on borderline fevers, or, you know, I've, I've seen this, because my own husband goes in when I think he should be in bed, you know? He doesn't want to miss. So, like, I, I don't know, I would, do you know how many would have met within that, like, within a seven-day range?
You mean just for last year?
The entire reason we're doing this program is to reduce the amount of absences there. So I don't think that raising it to seven is, I think that's going away from what we're trying to do.
But I think it would help younger...
Are you talking about five, five days for the bonus, or, or using the seven, an average of seven missed to build the schedule? Or both?
Yeah. Probably seven to build the schedule.
I think what's nice about the accumulating is because, and I think Tammy said this, is that, one year I might, I might not be ill one day and have perfect attendance.
Right.
And then three years down the road, I might get appendicitis or something, and have to miss 10 days.
Right.
But I still will get the bonus, because I've accumulated.
Yeah.
Right.
So it's an average of only five days a year.
Yeah.
Right.
So, you know, if I'm thinking of it from that respect, because, you know, even when I was, you know, principal and stuff like that, the only time I had anything to do was, is when I had to have an operation.
Right.
And that was 10 days.
Right. Right.
But I still, if you look over the span of all those years, I didn't miss hardly any days.
Right, I was just thinking about trying to retain, you know, just retain and help out our younger teachers.
It's always hard to get the young teachers to understand that, you know, they think they're invincible, all of us did when we were young, but, you know, but that I'm never going to need all those days, so.
Isn't it, you know, our policy, if they miss three consecutive days, they have to have a doctor's excuse?
Yes.
So.
If you're missing every Friday, that's not three days.
Right, yeah.
Right. Yeah, I'm thinking.
But I was just wondering, going back to what Katie's maybe saying, is that if we limit those days by a consecutive illness, then you could possibly excuse if they had a doctor's excuse. You know, if they come down with the flu, and they went to the doctor, and the doctor put them out for seven days.
That would make it a lot more difficult to do this at the end of the year. It was difficult enough.
Right.
Because then you're looking at.
All you have in time, George.
We, in fact, we printed those checks on payday.
Right.
Because we were waiting up to the last day, trying to figure out who should get it or shouldn't.
So from the financial side, we did save money. So it is reasonable, I'll use that word, to consider, is it reasonable, in your opinion, to consider this again?
I think it has some merit to try to encourage our newer employees to keep it, and our, even our employees who already have some incentive. I will say, I was disturbed that we had people who called up and said, why did I get this check? And they didn't even know about it.
Well, they're just doing the right thing, you always have some of those people.
Say, oh, I'm sorry, send that back.
But fun for that.
You don't know about it, don't send it back.
There just seems to be some Goldilocks zone that we may or may not have found yet. Maybe the five days is within that zone, but maybe more, or, you know, I don't know what the answer is, but I think we, it's worth doing again around maybe the same criteria.
And I, I mean, it's so tricky when you track people or students, but I would be curious, these people who missed more than whatever the biggest number you said was.
Twenty?
That twenty-plus days. You know, I want to know, as the president of the board, if that was really ill, I mean, were they like really ill?
With that many, with that many, that seems more likely, but there's a hundred and thirty-some or something that missed eleven to twenty?
Hundred and forty-eight.
Hundred and forty-eight?
Yep.
I think that's.
And like I said, I don't know that we can.
Of course.
But that is something that I would like, maybe you as the superintendent, just to look at, and I don't even know that I have to know, but, you know, is there a reason? You know, what is, you know, and if somebody's sick, I don't want them there, because I don't want my niece to bring home to me.
No, please, no.
But, you know, it is a lot for some of those, that, you know.
Well, I do know we've had.
Is this addressed in their, like, in the performance evaluations that the principals do, at least on most levels?
It's one of the standards in there.
Yeah, when we've had our quarterly meetings, we've shared this information.
With the principals.
With the principals.
And I think that's had an effect, too, because, because what George does at every one of our goals meetings with the individual principals quarterly, we will go, he prints off, or, well, now electronic, I'm trying to say paper.
Trying to say paper.
And they can see every employee and how many days they've missed, and what the reason was.
Mm-hmm.
So then, we're making the principals aware, where they may not have been in the past, that Joni Smith has missed, did you realize that that, Joni Smith has missed twenty days?
Right.
I didn't realize that, you know, and it doesn't always hit you as a principal does.
Well, I don't expect them to know that, because they, I mean, they, that can be on their radar, but they don't have time in their day.
No.
To be tallying how many times that person misses.
But then they can go back, once we've gone over it with them, and George has done that as part of his, the goals meeting.
That's great.
If they can go back and say, you know, I'm concerned, are you having health issues? You know, is there something that we need to know that we can help you with in that respect?
Well, I feel better about that.
But then it makes them know that the principal knows, and we know.
Right, yeah, okay.
And I don't know if that had an effect at all, but I know some of the principals were going back and having those conversations with someone.
And they should be, if it's twenty-plus, you know.
Of course, we had some pregnancies.
And plus, we had some folks deal with press, they have to get bonuses.
Right, and that's a whole different.
That's not even.
Circumstance, that has nothing to do with.
Right.
You know, what I'm thinking of, so.
What's your thoughts, let's say that a teacher ended up with a hundred days, and they fill out a paper that they're getting ready to retire? I mean, what are we looking, if they carry through and they end up with a hundred days of retirement?
Well, the people that are in that classification, now, they can use those days.
Just the new.
New people.
Since, since, um, twenty thirteen, fourteen, something like that, it's only been the last three or four years that.
New hires can't.
They changed the retirement.
So how many days can a new hire bank before they lose them, or at the end of the year?
They don't lose them until they.
At the end of their teaching, or at the end of their employment, they lose those days.
Right, they keep them, but, you know, as I said, the young people don't realize that, if I've been teaching for twenty years, all of a sudden, I might have cancer, and I'm going to be off a lot, or I might have a heart attack, or, and they don't think about that. I never thought about it when I was young. In fact, I can remember when my wife first started teaching in this county, she told me that one of the veteran teachers told her, I always use every one of my days every year, whether I'm sick or not, which I was like, are you kidding me?
I just can't believe.
There was a quote from Lois Simmons, that's every time you use the sick day, you might as well go out in the backyard and burn a hundred-dollar bill, because that's what you're doing. And that was true, but when you could use those days, but now.
And you make, you ask a good question.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
But the thing is, this isn't going to impact this.
Right.
For twenty years.
Right.
I mean, not that we shouldn't be forward-thinking.
Right.
But, you know, that circumstance, I'm not sure is going to.
Well, I'm in the retirement plan that my days don't count for anything when I retire. And I've got, I'll have, with this new fiscal year, I'll have over two hundred sick days that I, unless something happens between now and when I retire, I will not get to use those or anything. But I like having those two hundred sick days, because if something does happen, and I get sick, then I know I'm.
Getting paid.
Because I've seen lots of people over the years, that they burned through their days, and then something happens, and they're off for six months, eighteen months, something like that, and then on top of that, they're not getting a paycheck. Whereas if you accumulate those days, that's an insurance policy.
I would be in favor of continuing.
With the same program we have now?
Yes, definitely with the same parameter, but I would also like to consider, for those people who have that huge bank, and for the young people to grow that bank, to do the schedule that you had there.
I am interested in the schedule.
Well, we'll put on the next, because the school's going to start, so we need to set up a plan, so I'll get Mr. Wager to help me, we'll draft the policy with the table and then put that on there for first reading.
Is that okay with everybody?
Sounds great to me.
And then when we have our convocation, that would be one of my talking points, will be about attendance and everything, like, there's three or four very important things I'm going to be talking to them about.
The convocation on Wednesday?
So, the night is, the morning is the tech academy, and the afternoon is.
It's a Wednesday, yeah?
Yeah.
That is a Wednesday, yeah.
Okay, so there's a board meeting on the day before.
The day before, so.
So the first reading of that would be on there for the board.
And then at least I can bring it up and maybe bring you to the potential.
So you're going to do convocation the night and the afternoon?
Yes, exactly, we did this, yeah, we did it this way, that way this year, this past year, too.
One-thirty to two-thirty.
Yeah, because we have our tech, we're going to do another tech academy, so it was so well-received, and we have so many, it's going to be really good.
We've actually expanded it.
It's expanded it.
The tech, yeah.
Okay, all right. Anything else you want to add to that, guys? All right. Thank you for your work on that, Mr. Carver.
Yes, thank you.
Correspondents' information?
Okay, a couple of different things. You all should have received an email from the School Boards Association, probably today, you may not have checked your email yet, about the Fall Conference, September eighth and ninth. Just letting you be aware of that, since it came out today. You get seven hours credit, I believe. Also, we're in, we, we, being RESA seven, had to decide at the superintendent's conference, if you're aware, the state has decided there won't be RESSAs anymore, there will not be the eight RESSAs, there will only be four quadrants. Four, in other words, we're dividing the state into four areas. And so we had to vote to join a quadrant, and they gave us a couple of examples. One would have had us going basically up the eastern side of the state, of the state, up through the eastern panhandle, and no longer with Lewis County or our cousins.
Harrison.
I guess, you could say Harrison-Mon.
Cousins.
And then the other one was to combine RESA seven and eight, eight being the eastern panhandle. So our RESA, RESA eight voted to join, so we are now included in there, and.
Does that have a name?
Not yet, no. We don't really name the quadrants, what we'll be naming is the educational cooperative.
Yeah.
And that can be any counties, and we're really, we're meeting with Dr. Payne on the second, third, all fifty-five superintendents, to discuss some of those different issues with that, because with an ECS, and in our meeting today with superintendents, we kind of want to stay with some things with our RESA cohort, because we've done so many different things with them as a group. So there's going to be certain things, we kind of went through what is still going to be offered through our RESA, using the carryover money, there are going to be at least one more year of our RESA, using carryover funds, although they're quickly losing all of their employees. They're down to thirteen at RESA now.
I've seen, it's coming up on the job postings, our RESA job postings.
Anyone, pardon me, anyone who's working at RESA, so they will not have a job next year?
That, no, because there probably will still be carryover after that year, because we've been very frugal, I guess, I don't know what, how you say that. But we have enough probably to get through this school year, and at least half, maybe the whole of next year. In the meantime, we're trying to decide priorities for our area, do we have something that we want to specialize in, say? Like, I've heard in the southern part of the county, state, that some of the counties in the southern part are going to be cooperative for purchasing. So they will be sharing, hopefully sharing that with us. One of the ideas for our RESA was special ed, to be a special ed cooperative. We don't know what it's going to be yet, we haven't decided, but the thing with a cooperative is that we can be in a cooperative, let's say I'm special ed with the other counties in our RESA, and we could also be, if we find out there's a cooperative on something else that has a great interest to Upsher County, but it's like Logan and Mingo County, we could join them in that cooperative. So it's going to have.
Like on technology or something?
Yeah, so my question was.
These are your state, you go together, right?
Yeah, and there's one, the state's actually been pushing for their cooperative purchasing. We keep getting memos saying, we're going to be doing this for you, if you'd like to join us. But the thing is, my question is, and hopefully I'll get an answer by Dr. Payne, is who is going to coordinate through the State Department to let us know what other cooperatives out there? Because we may say we're going to do special ed, and five counties in the southwestern part of the state could decide to do it, and we don't even know each, we're both doing it. So I'm hoping that the state will at least, once there's a cooperative group, put out a list, at least.
Like midday?
So that we know what's available.
Yeah.
Because there may be some programs that our RESA is not having, that we've been interested in.
Exactly.
That are being done in somewhere else, if we can get in on that, to save money, you know, and do those kinds of things, so. There's a lot of more questions than there are answers right now. But I just wanted you to be aware of that. Kindergarten enrollment.
I was going to ask as well.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That thing, that, we got a message from Howard Cole today about the August fifth, about the cooperatives, and they said that info went to board presidents, so it ended out.
And I think it's only for board presidents.
I would go.
Oh, you're going, okay.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure some data's covered, you know?
Yeah, I just got that, kind of slow getting stuff out.
I was like, wait, I don't have this on my calendar, pay the button.
No, we just found out also.
Okay.
Kindergarten enrollment is kind of weird this year. Three, probably four of our elementary schools are full, in fact, overflowing, Buchanan Academy, Hodgesville, and Tennerton, which kind of is going to put us in a bind, and I think Union's pretty close. Where we have openings are in the southern part of county, but I can't transport kids from Hodgesville to Rock Cave. So right now, in fact, the one I'm working on the most is Hodgesville right now, the max they can have with one kindergarten is twenty-three, that's paying overage. We have thirty-five signed up.
Wow.
I don't know what's going on out in Hodgesville, but.
Well, you had.
We had that issue two years ago.
Well, those, not including them.
That's not including them.
No, we've had a couple requests for that.
Okay.
But we're not including them yet, that's just Hodgesville students.
Wow.
Our problem is, we usually would send that overflow to Buchanan Academy.
Yeah.
Buchanan Academy's full, it's going, and then Tennerton's full.
Right, it's tripping down from the north.
So we have, so I believe we're going to discuss it tomorrow more, but I think right now, and I've talked to Mrs. Phillips, that we're going to put a second kindergarten at Hodgesville.
Where?
They have a room.
Wonderful.
They have an extra room.
That's great.
So it means they're going to dismantle their lab, but they can put those out in the classrooms instead. But, so that's going to be, prove some interesting things going on down the line, if we get up another huge kindergarten out at Hodgesville, then we've got an issue with room.
Yeah.
So.
And we're going to have an issue for the next five years, if that many stay.
Well, there is a personnel law called the Anaconda, and the easiest way, what it is, is because the Anaconda goes like this, is that, let's say our kindergarten, we have two kindergartens, next year we only need one, now we need two firsts, we just transfer within the building.
Yeah.
At least, you know, that person, may not be the same person in the kindergarten that we hire, but the least senior in that person would have to move to that grade, which is not a bad thing.
It's not.
No.
As long as we don't need two.
And you do have years where the population increases.
Yeah.
But I just wanted you to be aware of that.
Were we, were we too full in Hodgesville a couple of years ago?
Yeah, but not, not to this extent.
No, okay.
This is usually three, four.
Oh, okay.
You know, maybe even five, but we have room usually at academies.
Is it twenty-two for kindergarten?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three.
Yeah.
And you have thirty-five.
And they can have ten without an aide, right?
Yes.
Teacher can have ten without an aide.
But I think.
So that's still enough, they would do a class and an aide.
You could do it that way, a twenty-three in a small class, still twelve.
You're probably separate, yeah.
Well, I still got twelve, so you're going to.
I would split them in half, yeah.
I was, yeah, that was my idea, seventeen, seventeen.
Well, I was just thinking about the, having to hire an aide, if we had less than ten.
Right, right.
That's where I was.
Yeah, but I just wanted you to be aware.
All right, anything else? All right. Item sixteen on your agenda is personnel, that is your attachment, aye?
We'd like to let you know we're still filling positions. The first time we advertised Hodgesville second grade, we had no applicants, which is amazing. In all my years, I've never seen us been able to, not be able to find elementary teachers. Secondary's different, but then I was looking today, we reposted it, and we've got two applicants.
Good, good. All right. Any questions about those personnel? If not, I will entertain a motion to accept those recommendations as presented.
Motion to approve.
Second?
All those in favor of accepting it as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, motion carries. We had no delegations, do we have any public comments? All right, or remember comments?
Well, I had a question, I didn't know whether it might have been addressed in unfinished business, but I see they're locating utility lines in front of academy again.
I have, no one has contacted me, in fact, I was like you, I drove by one day and said, oh, the stakes are out.
Right.
I have not been told when they plan on starting.
Okay.
And I hope they're starting soon, because school starts.
Or start the first.
Nope, we'll probably start the first day of school.
Yeah.
Probably start the first day of school. Maybe sarcastic, I didn't.
Could you call somebody?
I can.
Just, I mean, if they're not going to tell us, we may as well ask.
Yeah. I'll see if I can get a hold of.
I don't go that direction all the time, I usually turn off, I turn off on College Avenue.
Yeah, I always go past that.
Yeah.
I don't go to college, girl, that's why.
I guess, I go the other way. I don't know if I'd notice anyway. All right, our next meeting date is Tuesday, August eighth, at seven PM in this very location. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned, thank you all.